Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. I welcome each of you here tonight. We call this meeting to order. And if you will stand, Councilman Green will have her invocation and lead us on a pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Our heavenly Father, we thank you for the many blessings that you bestow upon us each day, especially the blessing of this beautiful city. We ask that you be with those who are less fortunate, sick, bereaved. Put your comforting arms around them and give them rest. We ask that you be with our troops overseas, bring them home safely. And if we may, dear Lord, we ask humbly that you be with us tonight and help us in our deliberations to do what is best for the city. In your son's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, buddy. Next item on our agenda is a special presentation. Mr. Wheeler?
Mr. Mayor, I don't believe any of the persons that we invited are here so we can move on.
Okay. All righty. Move on to audience visitors. If there's any one in the audience who would like to address council at this time on any issue, we'd like to hear from you at this time. I don't think there are any, so we will move on to the approval of our minutes, two sessions. You take those individually, please.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt the minutes to the regular session January 10th, 2011.
Okay. Motion made in second. We adopt those minutes from January the 10th, 2011. Any concerns, comments, corrections, additions? If not, Ms. Wiggins, please.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Creaker.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
And Mayor Helsel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote is seven to zero.
Thank you, Judy. Under the work session, please.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt the minutes of the work session of January 10th, 2011.
Okay.
Second.
All right. Motion made in second. We adopt the work session minutes as well. Any concerns, comments regarding those? If not, Judy, please.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Creaker.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
And Mayor Helsel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote is seven to zero.
Thank you, Judy. Move on to item F. It's a public hearing, pre-budget public hearing. Randy, any comments before we open the public hearing?
The purpose of the hearing is just to give the public an opportunity to express their thoughts on our budgetary priorities as I move forward, to prepare my budget, recommendations to you, and as part of your deliberative process, as you think about that and move towards approval of the budget in a couple of months.
Okay. Any comments by council before we open the public hearing? Okay. If not, then we will open the public hearing and ask if there's any one in the audience who would like to address council regarding the 2011-2012 budget. Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. No action tonight. Move on to new business. First item is a debt refinancing, a use unrestricted fund balance ordinance authorizing the issuance of up to $10 million principal amount of general obligation refunding bonds of the City of Pecosin, Virginia, providing for the form details and payment thereof. Mr. Wheeler?
Mr. Mayor, as you will recall from our last discussion on the budget two weeks ago, we were going to be working with our financial advisor, David Rose. Now, Dan Siegel is our bond counsel, to see if there were any other opportunities to restructure, refund, or refinance any of our existing debt. The idea was to see if there was an opportunity to reduce the step-up we were going to see in current debt service payments, and to do so in such a way that it would not increase our payments over time, meaning we could take advantage potentially of some savings in the short term without costing the public any more money in the long. Mr. Rose and his team did that. They're here to discuss that this evening. If you find this something that is favorable, we need action on that this evening, and that they negotiated a private placement which has a short window of acceptance. Mr. Rose?
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. I'm going to wait one second as Mr. Siegel from Sands Anderson hands out our presentation for everyone.
Get down.
I will say, as Dan's handing this out, Happy New Year and pleasure to be back. As last time I was here, I indicated that we like to come back if we have things like this because it means the city is saving money, and that's what we have in terms of an opportunity. If you would then, on page one, rather than just underscore what Mr. Wheeler said, I would just cast your eyes to the middle of the page, and you can see there that we took a look at all of the outstanding debt of the city, and there were three pieces of debt totaling about $9.8 million that currently have interest rates that are above interest rates that we can now get and lock into. You may recall that one of the things we did with all these issues was to set up very favorable call provisions. It's another way of saying that in doing certain private placements that we did, we made it in such a way, if possible, which it was, that we could call them in at any time if interest rates went lower. And pleased to say that that's exactly what we're doing today. We're calling them in to exchange the interest rates that average about 3.75% for an interest rate that's slightly below 3%, and that's what we're here to talk about. With that being said, on page two, the way we did this is how we've done it in the past, is we go out and competitively look for the banking institution or institutions that will provide the city with the lowest cost of money, as well as the most favorable terms and conditions. Having said that, if you go to page three, we received five bona fide bids. We were delighted, actually. We thought that was a very strong number. And their shaded in yellow is the most aggressive bid, which was done by SunTrust Bank. And this was very nice to see because in the last couple of years, SunTrust has not been as competitive as they once were, and they have really come back in full force, so much so that they actually beat the, what we'll call the cover bid, by almost 25 basis points or a quarter of a percent. So this is very much something that we felt good about. But the other thing, right below it, when it says optional redemption, this is a loan that we can prepay at any time without penalty. And that's what put us in the position of the three previous loans that we're here today. So we have an opportunity, if interest rates come down, or we need to do some restructuring down the road, we have the opportunity to do that again without penalty. So this was really a very favorable result that we hope you'll feel comfortable with. Page four is really where the rubber meets the road, what the total savings on this actually is. And what we're talking about, just so I can make it clear, we are locking in the interest rate from now through the end of the final maturity, which is 2022. We're not extending any maturities. We're simply exchanging, again, a high interest rate for a lower interest rate, basically almost eight tenths of a percent. And as a result, the net savings to the city, which we're recommending taking right up front in 2012, is going to be a little bit over $350,000. That number there is 348, 760, but we've also had some additional savings in terms of the cost of issuance came in under what we expect. So we're looking at something actually closer to $375,000, $80,000 of savings. And then the remaining years will be basically a break even, which, again, gives us the opportunity, if rates come down further, to always look at refinancing that as well. In the middle of our presentation, we talk about, for a pure refinancing such as this, meeting a certain savings threshold. And that savings threshold historically and traditionally has been 3% present value. What we're looking at here is something in excess of that 3% present value. So again, it meets all of the various tests, if you would, that makes sense to us to recommend this as a pure refinancing, to go from a higher interest rate to a low interest rate. Page five just sort of underscores all those points. And then page six, as I think the mayor indicated, or perhaps I should say, the city manager, excuse me, we are here today with a short window, and that window basically is that this rate is guaranteed and locked in so long as we move forward and close on the financing before Friday, February 4th. We see that opportunity actually to close shorter than that, if, again, it's the will of the council. And Mr. Siegel, who's our legal representative on behalf of the city, actually puts the documents together with SunTrust Bank to make sure that those things that we're talking about indeed are bona fide and do indeed show true savings. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that y'all might have on this particular matter.
Any questions?
On this estimated savings, does this include fees and everything?
That's why I think it's going to go higher.
So this is totally back to the city?
That's exactly. That's going to be back to the city. So we think that savings back to the city is not going to be the 350, but closer to 375, 380. That's it. That's all. And there'll be a final ended up, ending version of this that the manager can share with you after February 4th. So that'll be a very easy thing to do.
This savings probably couldn't happen at a better time.
No. I guess it's a great effort from y'all. Like I said, you've come in here several times over the several years, and you have done wonders with our loans. Obviously, the city's good credit rating helps us to achieve those, but it's not through good credit alone, and the work that you guys have done for us, and your firm has done for us. We really appreciate it, and this couldn't come at a better time, as a mayor.
Well, I appreciate it, Vice Mayor. I will say that it starts with the staff, because the staff started asking us to think about this several months ago, not a week or two ago. And so here we are, as we're all excited about going into the holiday season, and the manager's thinking about business, you know? And that's sort of been so with the staff. And when you set that up, we were ready to pounce, as we did in December, so that we were able to capture this. Here we are, basically, you know, third or fourth week in January, and we're ready to move forward with your acquiescence. So that's, again, it starts with the staff, and of course, your guidance, but it's... I thank the staff, and I thank you all for all your work, you know, over the holidays and whatever else. It's, you know, win-win-win for us. It is. And as the mayor said, it couldn't happen at a better time. So thank you all. We appreciate that.
Yeah, we're the ones...
I'm in Teresa also. Yes, absolutely. All the time.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Mr. Siegel?
I think before you, you have, that was passed out, a copy of the ordinance.
Yes.
And it's not unlike what you've seen in the past. We structured this to comply with the SunTrust Bank proposal, which we thought was probably favorable at this point. And we're really set to, depending on the council's interest, be able to close this next week. Our idea is to close it as fast as we can so that we can start the savings immediately.
More sandwiches.
Yeah, that's right.
That's good.
And we've set up, as the city attorney requires throughout, we've set up as well the traditional language on dispensing the second reading and having the effectiveness immediately. You may want to talk to the, speak to the city manager, the city attorney about that issue, just to be clear, but that's, we've tried to follow what we've done in the past for the...
It's ready to go. Ready to go. Okay. Yes, sir. Carrie?
For, maybe the manager can do this better now, but for the TV audience, can we just sort of summarize? We're taking three obligations that we owe at a much higher interest rate, consolidating them into this one $10 million package, and coming out some ahead due to the interest rate.
For the same term.
For the same term. So we're not extending debt or borrowing extra money. We're just doing better with the money we've already borrowed. And that, is that pretty well the case?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Want to go ahead and make a motion with that?
Go ahead.
I guess so. Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance authorizing the issuance of up to $10 million principal amount of general obligation refunding bonds of the City of Pecosin, Virginia, and providing for the form detail and payment thereof.
Okay. All right. We have a motion made in second. Emergency measure waived. I'm sorry. As an emergency... As an emergency measure. Is that all right with the motion and the second?
It is, yes.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? If not, Judy, please.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Creaker.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
And Mayor Helsel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote is seven to zero.
Thank you, ma'am. And thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
We always appreciate what you do.
David has one other question to share with us.
Yes, sir.
Do you recall, at your last meeting, we also discussed the amount of fund balance excessive your 13% guideline, how it might be used to attack some of our current debt load and other things? And we'd asked that report to look at that and come back and be responsive to that as well. And Mr. Rose is prepared to, so you can discuss that.
Again, Mr. Mayor, members of council, again, appreciate the opportunity to be here. What we have in front of you is basically some things to just think about and start a dialogue with. Page one is the background, and as Mr. Wheeler said, we've been asked, as your financial advisor, to take a look at your undesignated fund balance and talk a little bit about where we stand and some thoughts about where to go. With that being said, and for the audience, the city has a policy. One of the reasons why, again, we're able to do the refinancing is because you have a solid policy to make sure that when we talk about this undesignated fund balance, we're really talking about a rainy day fund. It's there for emergencies, and I've listed a few of the points that it's there for. But the bottom line is, the city is now, thankfully, a little overfunded, as opposed to underfunded, overfunded, to the tune of about 18%, and your policy calls for 15%. So it is a good problem. Maybe the word "problem" is not the right word. The opportunity is the word. But it's one that we have to be careful about, and that's why I'm here tonight. Where we are is we have that rainy day fund, basically today, at about $4.3 million. Our policy requires us to be slightly over $3.3 million. So to be exact, we're about $917,000 over our policy. And we've been asked to talk a little bit tonight about what to either do with that or how to look about working with those monies. And we wanted to make sure that you kept in mind what we'll call the "best practices", quote unquote, for municipal local governments, which you've been reading quite a bit about these days, about how local governments have not been doing these types of things. And so, again, I just want to shed some light on all this. On page two, I'd like to begin with a discussion of why it is important and critical to have an undesignated fund balance. There is an understanding, and I realize that I'm a taxpayer as well, not here, but in Richmond, as to say, well, every dollar belongs to the citizens, and we agree with that. However, every dollar that belongs to citizens, unfortunately, the way the cash flows work for local governments, as you know, we have to have certain monies in the bank at all time in order to meet payroll. It's just the way in which local governments bring monies in that are somewhat different, as you know, than some of us that are fortunate, for example, to get paid every two weeks or every month. Local governments, as you know, get paid in chunks, and sometimes the state doesn't pay us as quickly as we'd like, or they move things around. And at the same time, we also know that our taxpayers pay us in certain times of the year. It's not as typical, again, as most of us that perhaps see a paycheck, again, every couple of weeks or every month. As a result, the overall cash flow of the local government, paying the bills that you have to pay for heating, for lighting, for air conditioning, for personnel, is something that happens every month, and you can't get away from that. As a result, an undesignated fund balance, in part, is there so we make sure that we have enough money in our checking account, if you would, so we don't have to do any payday loans, we don't have to do any short-term borrowing. And that's one of the reasons why we recommend having an undesignated fund balance. The second reason, of course, and I think that's the one that's probably most obvious to all of us, is for emergency situations. If we have a hurricane, even though we may get monies back from FEMA, it may be one or two years until we get money back. So again, rather than having to go and do short-term borrowing, which is expensive and is not covered typically by a FEMA, we turn around and say, let's have enough money in the bank so if indeed a natural disaster occurs, we have the monies there to pay out bills that otherwise we would not typically see. The third reason we have an undesignated fund balance is for those unforeseen expenditures or potential revenue shortfalls. Sometimes we find, especially in difficult times, that sometimes the revenues are coming in a little slower than we expect, expenditures may be a little higher than we expect, or maybe, again, a little bit slower, like the revenues, as I mentioned. If the state should happen to move back by a few days or a few months their quarterly payments on certain things, we, as a local government, need to front that. We need to be resilient. And so, again, having a fund balance that's adequate helps us through those periods with how it having to do, again, any short-term borrowing. The next reason is the one that I think was alluded to by one of the council members, and that is that people that are lending us money, institutions that are lending us money, such as SunTrust, take comfort in knowing that we have an adequate fund balance, and we have a solid fund balance. And as a result, we get benefited by that, by getting an extra special or extra beneficial interest rate like we just did. So having said that, we see that having that fund balance really does reap some rewards, and that it gets us, again, a cutting-edge pricing by several institutions. And then finally, when that money is sitting in the coffers of this institution in terms of having the money available, we're earning interest on that money. Now, right now, we're not earning very much interest. That's just the nature of short-term interest rates. However, over time, though, you'll find that if you look at previous budgets that have been done over the years for the city, when you have $2, $3, $4, $5 million through the, in effect, in the savings account, in the checking account, whatever you want to call it, that historically has been tens of thousands of dollars that has been available to help make the general fund budget that much more palatable in any given year. So again, you get this benefit, and when you put all those things together, I just want to be sure that we realize that that money sitting there is indeed the citizens' money, but really, the combination of all those factors is really helping the city operate even more cost-effectively year in and year out. So it's not as if it is wasted money. To the contrary, it's very strategic monies that the city has that's allowing you to do things like the refinancing tonight. So with all of that, on page three, we have some recommendations. And one of those is that before we spend any of the excesses, our recommendations are, first, to ensure, as I say, adequate cash flow for day-to-day operations, month-to-month operations. That's paramount. Have to do that, otherwise, as we say, we fall into that payday loan, which is a slippery slope and very expensive. The second, again, trying to determine what on top of that is a fair and adequate number for this city with regard to unforeseen revenue shortfalls, or, again, any cuts in state funding that may be temporary or may be permanent for a given year and natural disasters. So we have to be sure of that. And then finally, recognizing that over time, as revenues will increase and expenditures will increase, just the nature of inflation, so too will the undesignated fund balance. That 15% will also go up. So we want to be sure that if we do cut into that for any reason, we have to realize that next year, we have to be back at 15% as well. We may have to then chit in some extra dollars. So we want to be careful not to do that. So with that said, on page four, what we are recommending is that, to the extent that you do look at using some or all of this excess monies, the thing that we've stressed here is that it's done only for one-time needs, not done to balance the budget, because, again, that's just a one-year masking of a problem in subsequent years. But rather, it's done for those one-time years. So bottom line, what could be done, what you may want to think about is one or a combination of several things that we've listed here. And the first is thinking about creating some fiscal stability reserve. And we talked about that in the past, if you recall, setting up that reserve for, again, helping towards self-imposed policies that, again, further strengthen the credit rating of the city, which is already strong. Second, towards certain capital projects that are, again, one-time in nature or an equity down payment of those capital projects. Third is moving them towards maybe a more global economic development initiatives, things that may be here now, or you expect to have over time, that you want to, again, earmark towards, again, certain economic development projects or project strategies. Fourth, possibly paying down some existing debt. We've looked at that over time. That is something that, again, can give us the benefit of extra cash flow for a period of time. And then finally, thinking about a capital reserve, setting up a capital reserve to offset some future debt service that will inevitably rise for capital projects that may be down the road, whether it's a school or something like that. We know that we're going to ultimately, as all local governments do, that are viable and vibrant, there's going to be other capital needs and borrowing needs down the road. This capital reserve could be a situation where we put that money there, and it's there to help us, over time, to bring on new debt, but not have a spike, or as much of a spike in future debt service with regard to truly new money. So with that said, we just want to be sure that what we don't use it for, and, again, we've listed those things, is, again, to create something that helps towards a structural deficit in a given year for operating costs, salaries, of the like. With that, I would just finish up on page five, and I realize I'm not elected, and perhaps maybe some of these comments are such, I wouldn't get elected. But what I would like to recommend is that, if possible, try to conserve this extra money in either one or several of those different purposes, because, as we like to say, cash is king. As long as we have that cash sitting, whether it's in a capital reserve, whether it's in the undesignated fund balance that's over 15%, it always gives us flexibility for the unforeseen, as opposed to just using it and then losing it, if you would, in terms of something that may come up. With that, again, it's not our purview, it's not our ability to tell you exactly how to use that money. That's what the citizens have elected you for, but we do want to, again, hopefully, give you some guidance here. And I think it's fitting that we give you that guidance on a night when we're here to save money, because, again, as I said, we're saving that money in part because when we did go out and solicit these bids from the banking institutions, all of them wanted to see audited financials, all of them wanted to see how the city has been performing, and we're able to show them that the city has been able to meet its bills, been able to meet its financial policy guideline of 15%, and, like I said, best that number. I really believe that had we gone below that 15%, we would not have the results in terms of the savings. We might not have some of those bids that we do have. So with that, I'll be quiet and see if I can't answer any questions from the council or anyone else.
Any questions, Mr. Rose?
On page four, there, we had the five uses. You know, were they in any kind of order or just a random order?
No, there really is no specific order. I think this really is the type of thing that all of you can decide, but since you've asked me, again, no specific one thing better than the other. I wouldn't say no.
Can I ask a question? The bullet number two on that list, and bullet number five, I think it is, the last one, very close to being the same. If we were, is there, if we were to take the $917,000, bring ourselves to 15%, and pay off the interest, pay off principal on one of the notes, is there a way to calculate what that would mean to us as far as term of that note? Or, I guess that's kind of the decision that, the information that I need to make to... to make the decision during the budget season. Obviously, we've got a lot of pressure on us with home values basically on the fall. There will be an equalization factor to the budget. I'm not sure that the whole, that the public will understand everything that there is to understand about equalization. But it's really about what we spend. And if that's going to save us on the spending side, then that's money well-used. If the taxpayers, if we can demonstrate what that would mean. Does that mean five years less in a note? Because we obviously have some things coming up down the line that are not right in front of us now. Or does it mean actual savings in, can we cut back on, because we're going to make a lump-sum payment, do we renegotiate a particular note for a lower payment?
I think that's a very good question, Vice Mayor. We can evaluate the most optimal notes. For example, I'll use the word notes, you know, debts to pay down. One of the things that, again, we'd be careful of is taking, assuming it could be done, I'm not sure it can, is taking, let's say, all of that $900,000 and trying to target one particular year because then you have subsequent year. You've taken care of that problem for one year and helped yourselves out. But again, where are you two years later or something like that? So what we would recommend, if indeed you went down that path, is to try as best as possible to spread those savings over, let's say, three or four or five years. With the theory being that, again, you're going to help, again, reduce the cost of government for several years. And the hope is that three or four or five years from now, revenues will pick back up again. Again, hopefully, in just the natural cycle of things, which has been very slow, mind you, the cycle in terms of things getting better. But hopefully, if we look at a three- or four- or five-year horizon, from the time the market or the overall economy really took its hit three years ago, that might be seven or eight years later. The hope is that things would get better. But then there's no guarantee. At least you would know going in, if we did that analysis and recommended that, we could come back and, working with staff, present that strategy. We certainly can do that.
I think that's kind of the information that I would like. Because bullet five looks like we're just saving money to pay interest. You know, if we want to use the money, I want to use it in an offensive way, not offensive to anybody. But I want to use it on offense, not on defense.
Right, proactively.
Okay, I want to proactively use it. And if it makes sense and we can show some savings within the budget cycle, then I think it's worth entertaining. If not, then we'll have other harder decisions to make on what to use that for.
And I would, again, Vice Mayor, what we've typically done, as you know, is we'll look to the manager to take the will of the council. And if it is to take a hard look at roughly a rounded-off $900,000, then...
Or subset. Don't get stuck on 900. You know, what's a subset of that look like? You know, is it just two increments? A half a million and $900,000? Or, you know, it doesn't have to be all or none. But what's the right number? Or a couple of different options in there.
Fair enough.
Other questions? All right.
Mr. Rose, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Rose.
Very well done. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, thank you.
Move on to item two on the new business resolution, making appointments to the library advisory board. Anyone prepared with the motion and some names? Mr. Green?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution making appointments to the library advisory board with the following names inserted. Ann Wilson from the Eastern Precinct, whose term expires January 31, 2014. Wanda Evans for the Western Precinct, same expiration date. And Mary Lynn Schimpf for the At-Large position.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All right, the motion made and seconded. We adopt the resolution with those names inserted. Any concerns, comments? Hearing, Ms. Wheeler, please.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Creeker.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
And Mayor Hill.
Aye.
And Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you, Judy. Mr. Wheeler, any comment?
A few, Mr. Mayor. One, just to share with the council that the bill that we discussed at your last meeting, the bill that would allow the city to set a separate tax rate for building improvements on real property in the land itself is progressing. Worked with Senator Miller to get that crafted. Spoke with Senator Miller last week before the Senate Finance Committee. We got a unanimous vote there. And it has cleared the Senate. It is waiting crossover. So it's going well. And when it comes back up, I'll be returning to the General Assembly to speak along with Senator Miller on the bill. Also, I put at your place a brief summary that I put together of three other bills, one of which you're aware of. But the first, and I would defer to Councilman Green, who spoke with me earlier today, pertains to a new concept in Virginia of a defense manufacturing zone. So, Mr. Green, do you want to speak to this?
Yes. When I was looking through the VML synopsis of bills being considered, this one kind of struck me as being something that could possibly help us. And it's special incentives for defense manufacturing zones. And I'm assuming, not knowing what the bill really says, and I think Randy, he's probably done more research on it, it's kind of like setting up an enterprise zone, which we tried to do several years ago. We would never satisfy the criteria for an enterprise zone. So this may be something that we will kind of watch and push if we can.
I think it's a great idea. As Mr. Green said, we're, fortunately for us, we're never going to qualify for an enterprise zone. And I say fortunately because the things that have to be happening in your community in order to qualify are things that we don't wish on ourselves. This is more similar to a technology zone, but it's geared specifically to this portion of the defense industry. And in reading the bill today, that portion in the bill, which is permissive, seems like a really good idea to me. And so you may want to consider sending out or having me send on your behalf a letter of support to the patron. As far as I know, there is no opposition of any significance to the bill in the General Assembly.
See, it's a big turnaround from what was going on three or four months ago. Because at the VML convention, there was talk about lowering the tax rate. And the folks in Newport News were really upset because of the shipyard, that it would hurt their taxes an awful lot. So I don't know how the change came about, but it's a great change.
Yeah, I'd like to suggest that we direct Randy to write that letter to the constituents and...
Absolutely.
Any objection to that?
No objection.
All right.
Let me see the more information we have.
The, it's also nice to be in a position to support bills because there will be occasions where we're not going to support a bill and ask somebody to at least give our explanation a listen. And I think it is helpful to speak in both directions, both favorably and in opposition sometimes when that's required. And with the next bill, that is one I wanted to bring to your attention. The, as you know, we're a member of VIPSa. And there's been a bill introduced by Delegate Morgan from Gloucester. And this bill would change the appointment authority from the current method in which each locality appoints its member. I'm currently your member. And change that so that the governor would make appointments. We're not real sure what problem this is solving because we've always felt very good about our representation. So I would ask you to consider a letter in opposition to the change. It seems to be a change without a good justification. And most of the VIPSa localities have already taken a position in opposition. And I expect that all of them, before we do, will. They're meeting with Delegate Morgan today, in fact, earlier this evening. And there may be some changes to the bill. But we can't see that this represents a good thing for the city of Pecosin. And so I'd ask you to consider whether or not we should convey a position in opposition to the patron.
Mr. Manager, I think we ought to strongly oppose anything that takes local authority and moves it to the state level. In my opinion, whatever the subject is, not a good move. And I just think we ought to strongly oppose it just based on the fact that they're taking local authority and trying to move it to Richmond.
Agreed.
And working with other localities, too, in our opposition. I think that's correct.
Sure. I think what you're hearing is, I want you to respond to that as well.
Yeah. The last legislative item to bring to your attention, and previously, Mr. Moore had brought it to your attention. There is a bill in the General Assembly, HB 1990. It's the third one summarized on the sheet. The patron for that bill is Delegate Janice from Glen Allen, Virginia. And what this, this bill does many things. It has technical corrections, all things. But the specific thing that talks, affects us is a consolidation of the judicial circuit, the circuit courts of Newport News, Hampton, York, Pecosin, James City County, and Williamsburg into a new 18th Judicial District. This, as envisioned in the bill, would go into effect a year from this coming July 1st. I imagine that the reason that it's taking so long is there are lots of things that they need to work out on how this would work. My suggestion, and Wayne may also want to speak to this, is that we write a letter to the patron and the affected localities and suggest that the bill be carried over a year so that these questions that Mr. Moore had indicated to you in his email could be satisfactorily worked out. Right now, we're not, again, sure what problem they're trying to solve. And we're unclear as to what logistical problems it would have, both for local governments, our citizens potentially, the defense bar, anybody that works through the court system. And so a recommendation to table for a year to allow it to work out allows for a vote on a piece of legislation that has been fully fleshed out as opposed to vote now and work it through in the next year. Alternatively, you could take a position in opposition. But I think, and Wayne may have a different opinion, but I think the biggest issue here is just there are so many unanswered questions. It's not necessarily that it's a bad thing or a good thing. Again, we're not sure what problems they're trying to solve. So we don't know how to evaluate that. Wayne, do you have a different perspective on that?
No, I raised with you most of the questions that I had. The one thing that's in the caption of this bill, where it says, "and reallocate number of judges serving", all that means is that Yawke County will not get a judge. That's all that means. They, you know, you well know, they didn't fund the vacant judgeships. Yawke County doesn't have a judge. And, you know, my best guess is, and it's only a guess, is that ultimately, there will be, the number of judges allocated to this new district will not include a judge for Yawke County. The downside of that is the Newport News judges have one of the highest caseloads in the state because of all the asbestos cases. So those judges are not going to fill in any of those positions. There's only one judge sitting in James City, Yawke, and he sits there full, I mean, James City, Williamsburg, he sits there full-time. So what that means is, the three judges in Hampton are the only judges that would be available to fill the vacancy in Yawke County. And the citizens of the county are not being served under the current system. We don't have a judge. Weeks go by to get cases heard, different judges hearing different motions. It is an absolutely miscarriage of justice to the citizens of Yawke County and Pecosin. And so, you know, if one of the ultimate goals is to reduce the number of judges serving in the 18th District so that Yawke County seat stays vacant, then I am absolutely, positively against it personally. But I don't know that that, I don't know enough details. As Randy said, I don't know enough of the details of what's driving this except that the caption in the title says, "reallocate number of judges created". That's the only reason you could possibly be wanting to do that. Because they're not going to give us more judges when they don't have a budget for yet.
Quite frankly, I think Wayne has hit the nail right on the head. And once again, York County and Pecosin are the ones that, and those folks that have cases pending month after month after month after month. And it's bound to cost those folks to retain lawyers. And I guess it backs up the caseloads just continuously.
It's not, the cases, there is not an unreasonable delay in getting the cases before the court because they're bringing in retired judges who are hearing these things. The disadvantage is, most of these cases have a number of pre-trial motions. So I go in with the pre-trial motion. I have Judge A, who comes down from where? He makes rulings. Then I come back to try the case. I have Judge B. Well, Judge B didn't participate in any of those rulings. And so what happens is, the party that lost all of those motions, they just try to redo them all over again because this judge doesn't know what happened. He hasn't had the background. So you end up giving those people two bites at the apple. You're having to be doubly prepared when you go back there. And you aren't getting a continuity of proceedings. And the second thing is, look, one of the critical things in any piece of litigation, you come in to talk to me because you've got a dispute. I mean, one of the things you want me to do is to give you some assessment of, what is the likelihood of this being a successful case? Well, you and I both know that every one of us thinks a little bit differently, approaches things a little bit differently. And if I know that judge, and I've been before him in the past and I have some continuity, I can give you, certainly not an answer, but I can at least tell you realistically, I think this is an expectation. But I can't do that when I don't know what judge I'm going to have, when I go up there[1572.04] with a different judge every time. So it means that any practicing attorney is not able to give, I think, the level of advice and guidance that you would like to be able to give to your client when that's the circumstance that you're having to face. And it's just, it's just totally unfair to the citizens to be placed in that position.
Well, there's, I guess to kind of sum up what you're saying, there's really three, three forms of government, right? In the Commonwealth and in the country. You have the executive branch in Virginia powered by the governor. You have the executive, I mean, the legislative branch, of which our mayor will soon be joining. And then we have judicial, and we have nobody in judicial. Bottom line, we're not serving the people with the light, with the rights that are guaranteed to them by being a citizen of the United States. You are due the rights of having a judge sitting in York County that will impartially hear and you're right through all the cases, not a bunch of retired guys coming back and filling in.
And they do a very good job. I have no, I have no problem with it.
No issue that they're trying to do their best.
I have no problem with it. They're doing a very good job in a, in a very difficult circumstance.
I understand.
Do you see in any way that this would be an opportunity to close down the courthouse in York County?
No, I don't think that's the case at all.
Is that the case at all?
No. I mean, I see it as an opportunity to not fill that vacancy.
Understand that, yeah.
By doing it this way. And the second, look, the second, that put, that's put the political aspect into it. You know, we're going to talk frankly about it. If, under current circumstances, York County is in the, is in the ninth judicial district. So there's York County, there's Williamsburg, James City, Charles City, New Kent, Gloucester, Matthews. They're all in the same, in the ninth circuit. Well, if you, if you look at all the players within that circuit, York County is a major player in that circuit. We have our own sitting judge designated to York County, the same way Williamsburg does, the same way Gloucester does, and even though they may go to some of the other jurisdictions on occasion. And looking at the caseload, and what you and I would consider to be the influence of the judge within that district that, that he's part of, one of those four judges, he certainly has a level of influence and respectability within those four judges because of the size of the county, the size of the caseload that he has relative to the other participants. You put York County, Pecosin in with Newport News, Hampton, and Williamsburg, James City, I don't think York County, Pecosin courts then have the same level of influence, respect that they would have, that they currently have in the ninth circuit. Because now you, you are, instead of having four judges, now you've got one in James City, you've got five in Newport News, and three in Hampton. So all of a sudden, now he's one of nine versus one of four. So I think it diminishes just the level of influence that that court would have in any kind of decision-making process. And that decision-making process is a number of things, rules of court, how business is conducted, who the, who the, who the chief judge is. And the chief judge, you understand, is the, is sort of the arbitrator of all the inter-judge kinds of things. And the chief judge gets to make certain appointments and things within his authority. So, you know, again, if you're one of four versus one of nine, to me, it's a different dynamic. All those things is why I'm not in favor of this bill because nobody ever came back to the local jurisdiction and said, "Here's what we ought to do. Here's what we are trying to do. Here's where we are going with this legislation." They never came to the city council in Pecosin and asked him anything. And I haven't heard anybody else say that they did, the people that I talked to, that there's been any effort to find out what the local take was on this proceeding. So anyway, I, the reason why I'm against it, didn't mean to preach, but that's the things that I've.
Thank you, Tom, it's appreciated, Wayne.
I take it you think we ought to oppose it rather than.
Absolutely.
No delay.
Don't ask me for advice if you don't want the answer.
Well, I'm kind of of the same opinion that we ought to just flat oppose it.
There's a, there's a few others.
And try to get York County to do it.
There's a few others hidden in here. One, this one, Delegate Johnny Jano of Portsmouth, on VRS funding.
Oh, yeah.
We definitely should take opposition to that. You know, it's, it's a really poor statement in here. In the past years, it appears that Jano has put the blame on localities for the cost of retirement because of salary increases given at the local level that exceed those funded by the state. So, I mean, that's, that's like saying, well, you know, there are employee, but yet we want to walk away from their retirement, and if you guys give them a raise, then you have to plus up their retirement as well. So, I mean, that's, that's really dangerous politics right there, but dangerous for our city budget because VRS funds are the ones that we control the least here, we just get the bill. I think we need to take some opposition to that as well.
Okay, all right.
Back to the court one, I would just like to speak with the other localities as well and make sure that they're, because the problem with the courts is that something does need to be done. So if, if, rather than imposing it, well, I suppose if we opposed it, they would start on something different the next year. But I think it needs to be addressed, just not in the way they're doing it now. So I don't know whether opposing it would be a better way of handling that, or saying, "Let's put this on hold until we can fix it." Because something needs to be done. There aren't enough judges.
Yeah, but this thing may not need fixing, it may need to be thrown away.
It may need thrown away, right, right.
Might need to start over.
Right. So I don't know what would be the best way to handle that. To look at it, would it be more closely looked at if it, if it stays in the system and we say, or instruct them to look at it for a year? Or would it be looked at more if we say, "This fails, go try again"?
Well, I think.
And I don't know.
I think, and, you know, not preaching here, but I think that the correct method for the state to do would be to fill the judgeship that was vacated.
Mm-hmm.
Quite simply, we're trying to fix a system that wasn't broken because we haven't appointed a judge, which was right down their lane.
Perhaps, right.
So I'd like to just kind of stay simple, oppose any changes, and, but we do need to mention in the letter that you do need to appoint a judge.
If you want, if you want to address the judgeship, what you need to do is send a letter to our representatives, Senate members, and say, "Fill the position in York County with a judge. We want that done, we want it done this session." We understand that the budget doesn't allow it to take office until July the first because there's no funds for it, but, you know, it would be a two-pronged attack, it seemed like to me.
Gee, just pass it, none of the.
If you look, Randy, at the weekly report you sent out back in the 20th of January, under finances and taxes, that's in the second page, "The machinery and tools tax faces new assault." That Delegate from the House Finance Committee has introduced yet another measure to end local taxation of machinery and tools. Now, I don't know how that goes along with the one that's being sponsored by the Senate, not to end it, but, you know, keep it the way it is or whatever. But there seems to be a conflict there somewhere, and I don't know whether there's anything that's come in since your 20th memorandum that has killed.
Off the top of my head, but generally speaking, as you think about it, there, you have the most amount of influence as a local government on your own delegation, of which we have Senator Miller at the moment. There are bills like Business and Tools, and VRS, and others, that Baco, BML, and a host of people are giving voice to, and that doesn't mean we shouldn't also. But then there are, there are locality-specific bills, like the VIPSa bill and this judgeship consolidation, that if we don't speak, there is nobody else to speak at statewide level on that. So, so be mindful that there are a host of people on some of these bigger bills. But it's the smaller ones that if we don't, if we don't chime up on, they're just going to assume that there's no opposition, no concern, and, and we're going to be reading about it at the other side of crossover day, scratching their head as to how this got through.
I understand. I'm just pointing out where somebody from the Senate, you know, spoke about, you know, local incentives for machinery and tools, and at the same time, somebody in the House came out against it, you know, and do away with it. So I was wondering about, you know, the crossover and where it goes, and where it ends up in the trash can again, or whatever.
If they both pass after crossover, they'll go to the other House and likely go back to the same originating committees on the other side. And they'll either be reconciled, killed, or every once in a while, both passed. But that is, that last one is unusual for the state. They actually do a, a real good job of consolidating bills. I'll be glad to look at that one.
It says here that, you know, his bill last year, the same bill from, that was defeated twice on the House floor after heavy lobbying from localities. So I imagine Glenn Older from Newport News and John Miller and the delegation from Newport News Hampton are up there in Richmond a lot, arguing against something like that he's trying to put across.
Newport News specifically stands to lose closer to 10 million than 1 million on that particular set of bills. I heard that at lunch today.
Okay, anything else, Randy?
Yes, sir. Just a reminder, we'll have a working dinner tomorrow at 5:00 PM at the Briar Patch with the folks from CASA. And tomorrow evening at 7:00 at the Community Center, we're having a meeting to meet, so the city council can hear from those persons that are directly impacted by the sidewalk project that's being put forward. An informational infomercial for our CERT team, for those citizens that might be interested in joining our Citizens Emergency Response Team, Community Emergency Response Team. They're going to begin basic CERT training for prospective members coming up, beginning in March 3rd, and will run seven consecutive Thursday evenings. If you have a, an interest in that, you can contact the city manager's office, Mike Bryant in the Fire and Rescue Department, or Lisa Holloway, who is the, she is the coordinator of the CERT team. And then lastly, I bring this up because when we discussed this last, the direction to me was to try to work on some further amendments to the burn ordinance, give it several months for our leaf collection program to be put in place and see the effects of that. And then I was to bring it back to you for further direction. So I'm asking now if there's direction to put this on a future, future agenda.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I would, would like to see a, just to flat, just condense that thing down to like one page, no burn ordinance. But I don't believe I've got enough votes on this council to get it passed. But that would certainly be what I'd prefer.
Okay, any other comments?
You never know.
Well, you never know, but.
You never know, but what I'm saying, the one thing I will say has changed since the many years that we've all sat here together and we've talked about burning leaves. One thing I will say that has changed is now that the city is picking them up, which we never offered, I haven't seen the amount of burning going on that did before, which tells me that it was probably our own doing. Okay? By not offering the service, they were getting rid of them any way that they could. What I would also say is that, I don't want to pass legislation just to pass legislation. I think you can agree with me on that, Carrie. You know, we don't like to have rules just to have them out there.
That's true.
So if we're not addressing a problem that I don't see today, it actually takes more energy to burn your leaves than it does for the city to pick them up. Many hours can be spent out there attending your fire. So I think that we've been successful, and I think that, I'd like to just kind of see if, just kind of set it aside and see if it'll ride and go away. Because I, again, I don't see any way we can write the perfect ordinance not to have any burning outside.
Well, I agree with you.
Next thing you know, we're regulating campfires and barbecue pits, and I just, if we don't have the problem, I'd like to see us set it aside.
Well, I agree with you that we really reduced the amount of burning this fall. And I think Public Works just, you know, did a great job doing that. I think an ordinance would reduce the rest of them.
I'd like to see us take the next step and get a vacuum, portable vacuum system and do away with the plastic bags. And pick up, have a schedule for each neighborhood and pick up the leaves three times.
I can support that. We'll have to kind of look at that as we roll into the budget season, but obviously we need to make the next step, but I think.
What's council's pleasure on the, on the ordinance at this point in time? So Randy has some direction?
I'd like to set it aside.
Okay.
Yeah, set it aside.
Okay for that for now?
Yeah, I think we don't need to make a rule unless we find a problem to solve.
Okay, good enough.
Well, I think we have a problem, but I think I'm so outvoted that I'm not going to push it.
I'm in the middle, kind of with you, Carrie. It would have to be a different ordinance, but.
Yeah, reduce it down and make, you know.
Thank you, that's all, sir.
That's all? Okay. Bud, any comments?
Yeah, I would like to thank Ann Wilson, Marilyn Schamp, and Monda Evans for their willingness to serve on this library committee. And would encourage any other citizens to fill out applications to serve on those various boards and committees. It's great to have a list of people to select from, and it's good to have civic involvement. And congratulations on your.
Thank you, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
I'm going to piggyback on both things. He said congratulations, and I know that as a Republican nominee for our district, the entire area will be well-served. And that's not just the 91st District, but really, I think, all of the Hampton Roads area. So congratulations and thank you for being willing to do it. And also to piggyback on the getting citizens involved, I saw that today Vicki had updated the website with descriptions of the boards and their meeting times so that it's a lot more informative, and I think that that was well done. I know we had talked about that in the past. And I think, I recall that there's a parade of champions, is that tomorrow?
Saturday.
Saturday, okay, okay. I was wondering why I was in the lead, so if it's Saturday that's, but 3 o'clock, which the Christmas parade, right? Okay. All right, and that is all.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Bud, any comments?
Yeah, I'd like to congratulate you, Gordon, on your election or your nomination. And I think it's going to bode well for the 91st, and of course, it's going to leave a vacuum for the city. You've certainly done more than you'll share for the city of Pecosin, and we really appreciate it. But I know you've helped the 91st District a tremendous amount. And I'd like to thank Randy for picking up the ball on the bill. We found out late that if they had mirrored the bill for Roanoke and Fairfax, it did the exact opposite of what we wanted, and thanks to his grabbing the ball and running with it, he was able to get it amended and be worded the way we wanted it to be. So thank you, Randy, and appreciate you doing that.
Senator Miller played a big part in that as well.
Thank you, Bud. Kind words. Carrie?
Well, just congratulate you, and I think the General Assembly is better off. We're going to miss you around here a lot, though. That's all.
Okay, Frank?
Echo Carrie's words, and remind people, they didn't hear from Tracy that Saturday at 3:00 with Creek Road, the parade of champions for 2010. So hope that folks turn out and watch them come down the road. That's it.
Yeah, it's going to be, it's going to be a really neat parade in that they're honoring not only the football team, but the baseball team, cheerleaders. I think the little guys that won the Super Bowl, they'll be in the parade as well, and it's going to be well done. So last night, I had, I had the pleasure of speaking to that banquet. Quite a turnout there, and quite an opportunity to be able to, to speak to those, those young champions and their coaches. We're very humbled to be there. And Dave Callis deserves a lot of credit for this. You know, we've talked a lot, and we've talked intermittently about Heritage Park, and all of you know what that's about, and I think we've explained it to public. The problem that we've had is raising the money to, to get it started. This week, Farm Fresh agreed to give us $5,000. Actually, the check's already been deposited, and we're hoping that in the next week, that we have another 10. And if we have that 10, then the dollars are there. The dollars are there for this council. I hope that you folks will move forward on that project and finish it. Thanks to Bud's company there, there's, there's a lot of donations that will, will come out of Pembroke Construction. We have a few things that we need to do as a city, which the manager, sure as me, can be done, but kind of as a, as not maybe a last request, but a semi-last request, I certainly hope this council moves forward once that, once that money is secured. Let me address the, the election just, just for a second, if I could, and thank you all for your, for your very kind comments. You know, I have not decided what the day will be when I will submit my resignation. It has to come, and believe me, it will be without question the hardest thing that I've ever done in my life. To, you know, to pack it up and to walk away, it's going to be difficult. It's going to be difficult for me. Let me just say this, that in the 28 years that I've served, if, if there is any credit coming my way, then don't put it on my shoulders. You give it to the council members that I've served with, and certainly to the staff that have been just outstanding. You have been there to assist me, you have been there to help me, you have been there to tell me when I said something wrong and when I said something right. Vicki, you've been, how in the world you read what I write, I'll never understand it. But, but, you know, the staff here has just been so dedicated, and I am very, very appreciative of that. You know, I will have some words to say at probably the next council meeting. I would like for this council to determine on its own when the timing is right for you folks. Whatever the transition is going to be, it needs to be smooth, and it needs to be done, I think, quickly. You have a budget process that'll be coming up shortly, and, and you don't need to be distracted with, you know, with trying to select your new mayor and, and get me out the door. So I'm going to try to talk with each of you tomorrow. All of you have told me tonight you will be available. Randy, I will certainly want to discuss it with you, but it's, it's just something that I'm going to have to do. And again, I don't look forward to it. But let me thank this community as well. I stood in awe on the 18th at the support that was at Imus Church. I, it was the most humbling experience, I think, that I've ever had in my lifetime. And if nothing else, certainly no credit to me, but the city of Pecosin has been underestimated for a long time, and I think they, they showed the other localities last Tuesday that don't underestimate them in many ways. So I am so grateful for everyone that turned out. It was cold, it was nasty, couldn't have been a worse day, yet they were there. And so I'm, I'm indebted to you as a city. And as I say, I'll have some comments to make when we, when we, as a council, determine when that exit benefits this council and the staff best. So with that, we have a closed session.
I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
I got carried away, I didn't, I didn't.
You're on a roll.
I'm on a roll.
You're on a roll, and you deserve to be on a roll. But I was going to tell you congratulations, but I kind of want to address one of the things you said. You're not packing it in, and this city is not losing very fine representative. We're just. We're just represented at a place and at a time where we need it the most in, at the state level. The state government, I'll be the first one to admit that I ride them pretty hard, you know? It's, it's like, you know, you're not doing your duty. But they've got a person that's coming up there that knows what the duty is, that believes in government, and that will represent us well. And as best I can tell, joy is not moving from Pecosin Avenue.
Absolutely not.
So, so while you will be representing us well in Richmond, you will still be a member of this community, and so I don't really call it packing it in and running away. We still know where to find you.
Thank you, Dean. I appreciate it.
No problem. That's all.
Okay. We do have a closed session that we need to go to, and if someone will move in that direction and read the paragraph beneath it, I'd appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we convene a closed session pursuant to Section 2.2, 3711 A3 and A7 of the Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended to discuss the disposition of publicly-held real property, i.e. Messick Point, and for consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual litigation, Martin versus BZA.
Thank you, sir. Second. Okay. We should wait a second. We go closed session. Ms. Wiggins, please.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
And Mayor Hesse.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of 7 to 0.
Okay. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Walter.